They're both live.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I will open the public hearing for the Copper Springs subdivision facing schedule change. Megan, is it? Do you want to address counsel at this time, or Jeremy?
No.
Jeremy, you have the floor then.
I get just a quick update, so I'm just gonna basically off their letter requesting an extension of the phasing plan for Copper Springs. The subdivision was approved in September of 2020. The phasing plan that was approved with the subdivision application had Phase One being final plotted at the end of 2022, Phase Two being final plotted at the end of '27, and Phase Three being final plotted at the end of 2032. Counsel did approve a phasing plan update in 2022 for Phase One to be completed at the end of 2024. Now we are at the end of 2024. So they're requesting an update to the phasing schedule. They would like to extend the Phase One final plat out to 2028, Phase Two out to 2030, and then Phase Three would still be completed in 2032. So they're not proposing to extend the final phase date. They're just adjusting the Phase One and Phase Two dates. So their original application anticipated Phase Three being completed in 2032, and they're still anticipating that as well. I don't see any issues with this phasing plan update.
Okay. Is there any public comment on the request for a scheduling change? Is there any comment from counsel at this time, keeping in mind that our last counsel threw an action lead?
Mayor, I've got a question for Eric, a member of counsel. I guess originally had a need for things like relief stations and infrastructure that was required in the city site. Is that postponable to meet this schedule? Is there anything we were obligated to do that should have been met between 2022 and 2024? It can now be pushed off to 2028.
The application is installed.
They're doing all that.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And that's what they're proposing is to just kind of delay that infrastructure installation.
Okay. Counsel, I have a minor concern that we're pushing a population influx over a ten-year period to a population influx of four, which is going to impact the school, going to impact a number of things. And I wonder if we need to take our retirement decision.
I'll ask you to ask that question again outside of the public hearings when we address this topic for action.
When is the schedule to request for action?
After we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Is there any other public comment or question? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing and move to the city council meeting. Seeing that we have the developer online, I'm going to drop down into that particular agenda item right now and open that up for discussion. So JD, would you rephrase or redirect your question?
Once again, I'm a minor worried about pushing what was originally a population increase over ten years to a population increase of four. I'm an advocate. I believe the city can use some more population to meet that beast and problem problems. But four years is going to have an impact on, for example, the school that at the moment is probably unplanned and unknown. And there may be other impacts in the city where the increase in the population impacts. Do you have any further concerns or concerns?
No, I don't think that you're lying, but I do believe that I'm not lying. To be very clear. I do believe that in the subdivision application process, they were obligated to do impact studies, of which I assume the school was not.
So the school is not part of that because state subdivision law does not allow us to... We can analyze impacts to schools, but we cannot deny a subdivision based on the impacts to schools. And so even though the application included those numbers, we can't really do anything about it. And that's in state law. So I understand the concern for sure. But the other items, like street impacts and those sorts of things, they are required to do PERs and provide some mitigation for their impacts to streets that are using, who would be used to access the subdivision, things like that. So that's part of the conditions of approval. And those conditions aren't changing with this phasing plan.
Other comments or questions from counsel?
I think it's thirteen. Megan, is that right, thirteen, fourteen?
Sorry, I leaked out. What was the question?
How many units in Phase One, do you remember?
Twelve.
Well, it's just a small corner of that small north.
Do they like cottage houses?
Yeah.
This is, I hate to ask, my mayor. The last time this was presented, I was at the privilege of sitting in the audience, so up here, we asked what the average home cost would be without COVID. That has certainly changed. Do we know what the average home price is going to be at this point?
That's a question for you, Megan.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, my globe. It's hard to say, and that's sort of why we're pointing it since 2020. Our economy has drastically changed and prices have drastically changed. Infrastructure has almost doubled, and that's why we're sort of hoping it'll come down in the next couple of years. Guessing a home price is impossible to guess.
The question I have...
I would like to say one thing, but it's hard to know where it will be.
The question before counsel tonight is whether or not to approve a request for an extension. And the question I have is what are the ramifications if counsel denies the extension?
So that means they can't finalize their Phase One final plat, which means their subdivision basically is not approved anymore because they haven't completed their first phase by the end of this year. And they would have to resubmit their subdivision application, and we would have to start the whole review process over again.
You know, the issue is coming up, particularly concerned about denying the application I'm worried about. I mean, it has come down a little bit further, especially in the third phase. Is there an option to spread that out a little bit more?
Make the third phase further out than 2030.
Maybe in two years.
That's up to Megan. We can't dictate that. They have to compose that. So Megan, did you hear that question?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be fine to add that option. But if there's the absorption, I mean, most likely there wouldn't be an absorption in ten years to take over the whole thing. But I would be fine with adding two years to it.
Was there any particular reason, Megan, that you did not request an extension on the third phase?
We, that's just what our engineer recommended to do.
Things very similar.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from counsel?
I'm gonna ask a stupid question, but with what's happening with the growth of towns and we're delaying this growth process through you guys. I understand. Is there a reason why we're extending and putting it out there further, I'm not... Perpetual to the whole plan? I'm just gonna say that front. I'm a man. People want that here. And we're looking at a ten-year window of the population's gonna be a problem. And this is the only plan that I see that we have to accommodate people, not ask a issue.
For the, the original ones tickers. Now they're holding the last date, but they're compressing the first date.
Is there any reason we can expedite versus?
So we're, so we're, I'm the contract lawyer for you guys. So the developer is in the driver's seat. It's their money that they're spending on infrastructure. And so it's completely on their schedule how they want to develop this subdivision. And right now, based on what we understand, you know, infrastructure costs are just expensive. And when they plotted this, when they got the, put it in place in 2020, right? Infrastructure costs were a little different, and over the next two years after that, infrastructure costs went crazy. And so that's what they're up against, is they're trying to, they're trying to make the houses affordable. It's the hand, you know, as horrible as possible. How's that? But they've got to contend with these infrastructure costs. And that's what all developers process data at, it's true. It's the structure cost, right? And the price and the cost of building those too. So it's always the same time. So they're, by extending it, they're hoping those infrastructure costs might come down a little bit over the next couple of years? And building prices and the cost of it might come down a little bit? That's what they're hoping. No guarantees, but you know, that's what they're hoping.
If it doesn't, it just goes up.
And then you got interest rates. I was talking about that too, right? Mortgage, mortgage interest rates are high right now too. So, you know, and construction loan interest rates are high, you know, all those things are high. So hopefully, I mean, hopefully some of those things come down over the next couple of years. I'm sure these guys, I mean, Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure they like to get it going and get this thing done.
Well, town's got the lowest percentage of available housing in all of those sized towns in the state. And that's 1.69 percent. And that's just the worst, the worst bet. Regardless of the crisis of what's going on. So we're gonna be faced as a city going, okay, what are we gonna do if all those people want something later, right?
And put... So I'm going to redirect again. The question before you tonight is whether or not to extend this schedule. If you deny the request for extension, that essentially means the developer hasn't met the conditions of the initial plan and they start over again. Okay? Is that succinctly phrased? So at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to accept the extension as proposed. That we accept the subdivision manager's willingness to potentially delay that third phase. That we address that at a later date when we know more, but otherwise takes out. That's a conflict. Why would the worst have given?
The motion before counsel is to accept the request for the extension, keeping in mind that perhaps a further extension on Phase Three might be presented in the future. Is there a second to that motion? I will second that motion. It's been moved and seconded to what I said just a minute ago. Good luck, Carrie. Is there any further discussion from counsel? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Megan, for joining us tonight.
Thanks, Megan.
All right. Good night. Have a good day.
We'll move back up to the top of the agenda now and ask for public comments on any matter that is not on the agenda but is under the city's jurisdiction. This would be your opportunity. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Al Chris Hopperston. I'm here as a member of the C C D C Trails Committee. A year ago, we came in and made a presentation about what we were pursuing across the county for a trails plan. A lot of things have moved since then. And so this is a update and probably an opportunity to get me back on the agenda with some more details. So what you have before you is a packet. A lot of it is drawings and stuff out of the Fairgrounds Master Plan. The Fairgrounds Master Plan, when that was done, identified the need for a, at that time, a wastewater pipeline from Fairgrounds to tie into the city system. As we know, that didn't develop. What did develop was a water tank and pipeline from Fairgrounds area. And so what we looked at, and I think at the meeting about a year ago, we had a discussion here about, could we use a water pipeline as a avenue to build that trail? Fairgrounds Master Plan called for a pedestrian trail, hike bike, hedge up, maybe just gravel surface, and clusters of traffic to get from the Fairgrounds into town. And from town to get out of Fairgrounds without being on that highway. So it, the Master Plan addressed the need for that pathway. There, and down below, the green things are all excerpts out of the plans, the ten references in the plan talked about the need. And status of having a trail from Fairgrounds to town. The drawings, the one we put a red line in it is the one directly out of, I think it's made here for the case. It's the one out of the Master Plan that shows that that trail would be on the north side of the highway all the way through the Fairgrounds to Harrison, on the edge of town. I think that's Harrison, right? Because the Master Plan, I think it's called Henderson. And I spent some time trying to find Henderson Street. Anyway, it shows the layout of it. It speaks to what that path would be, a ten-foot wide asphalt surface. And if you look at highway specs for their trails, it has to be in their highway, in their right ways. It has to have a six-inch gravel substrate to the asphalt. So it's a standard, almost a driveway pattern. So so the questions I have to take to our Trails Committee so we can continue to pursue bringing this together is, first of all, we hope that we can work out some way to use that pipeline as a trail surface to build that trail, so we don't have to do a bunch more excavation, a bunch more digging. All the digging's gonna be done, go back in place. If we can cap that with that, like the road mix gravel surface and asphalt that, will that waterline be suitable for that trail? First of all, I don't know if there's an issue out there about putting the trail on top of a water line. The suspicion isn't deep enough. It has to well done, and it's a great way to talk about it, should be a problem. But it is, it is a question that we have. The, in the Master Plan projected, this is in 2020, costs $377,000. Now, if working together, we can use the excavation, we're under waterline contractors, we're close contractors, and getting them to even participate in running into their pockets to grant or something to lay that gravel mix down. That may be, that may be savings if we don't have to have a view. And so then, then the asphalt, it may be. And so our hope is there's a way we can work together. And I seen your agenda at the 10 o'clock meeting this morning up in here. And I apologize for not getting my stuff in and not being on the agenda of the topic. I'm just, I've been drafting the trails. If you need me or any of us to come back for more discussion, we'd be glad to do it. First set of grants, there's an alternative transportation grant, it's due in January. And I believe this will fit under, what we don't have is a cost estimate, it'll be different from what we got here. And then, lack of anything else, we lose the numbers out of this. But, and then there's a fish pond, parks, a few grants will open there, will also be on trails. So they also kind of fit together. And then if we need to, we're trust boards out there. We have to have a, for any of those grants, so far, the Trans, Alternative Transportation Grant has a clause in there that for population centers less than 5,000, they can't agree the match requirement. If you also request a $5,000 part of that grant paid for engineering services. So that would be a good one if I, Fishy Dame is a 10% grant. And I think probably a lot of ways to make that a bit, whether it's your staff that already worked on that water line. Some of that kind of money could help go to the match for the trailer project, probably. With some fashion on the end. So I, I'm hopefully, I'm hopeful that we, in a way, we can work with the contractors, with student, you guys, through, actually, I don't know how you get sets set up, to manage that contract. It's gonna be a lot of time to do that. But anyway, that's, that's my, that's my public comment for tonight. So if you would like me to be able to come back for more detail, if you have a question that you'd like, yes or no? If you want to be on, it's right here, you can come back.
Are there any brief questions for Mr. Stoppus about this vote?
Have you, driving that road heading out that way, it doesn't seem like there's ten level feet anywhere along. It kind of looks a far bit. I don't know how much fill you would need to give it up to get leveled, coming to town. Here, there might be some spots that you could, there's, are you gonna run out of gas, or how far off the highway?
Well, we'll follow the water line wherever that goes. And I think, looking at the drawings, the water line's all within the right away. That's the same criteria we have when we put the trail line on it, like the state in the right way. And then that would be the only difference, design-wise, the trail's gonna have. You can't, it can't infringe much on that, on that water. That water line's gonna have the comforts back there. And then there's canal crossing. So that may result in having that bridge or some kind of hill to go on top. The first, first hill out there is the only place that could really, really doesn't, we did have the MDT road engineer out there that does trail work. And he was very helpful, very encouraging. And that was the only spot that seemed like, that might be an issue with the trail, because otherwise, I mean, you have...
Well, I was thinking the angle of shipments, from the road, it was all the way down to the fence line.
Yeah, there'd be, there'd be some places where we'd go.
And that was added in this project, sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's why the people who put the Master Plan together for the Fairgrounds have looked at that. I mean, it's all surveyed out, and they did that much, and so I assume that's in your thoughts.
First of all, congratulations. I'm glad you were able to pull this. But it seems to me that other than putting you in contact with the contractor with perhaps a word of recognition that says we'd like to build with this guy to help him achieve his goals, there's really nothing that's involved in the city here other than the connection to Harrison. Your, your costs, your plans, don't touch us at all.
Well, and that's one of the things you can, this is my experience with contractors, is that you can't, you can't add work, you know, and agree upon things. If there was a trail design, and we had grant money that the teams at C C D C were through the city, so we could talk about how, how we'd like to see grants pursued. That money could come either way. We could have C C D C sign over to the city. It becomes part of your contract, which that...
I want you to modify our contract for the company.
Once, once we get, if we have the grant money. At this point, we have nothing but discussions. The contracts can be modified and or can be added, especially if we had separate money that said you...
Listen, I'm sure that I would be surprised if the contractor would get proposed with the idea of, there's no burden on you, they're just gonna come behind you to put in, fill in this asphalt layer above. Contractor's first response is probably to be, sure, we're done. If what we're doing is asking the contractor to change what they're doing and operate a subdivision, that's a potentially big deal.
Well, again, yeah. I mean, I've worked with contractors who've worked together on stuff, so...
Yeah, I, I know, yeah, my... They don't wanna do it. It's easy for them to ask to help.
Jeremy, you got any questions or comments?
Well, the only thing I would add is the TA program, I'm very familiar with that TA program. That's an MDT program. MDT measures that. If you give the, if you get the funds, MDT does everything. So you would have no opportunity to add that to the project. MDT designs it, MDT builds it, MDT doesn't work. So, yeah, that's part of their thing. So if you go, I mean, and I would recommend that program because the cost is always higher because the state's doing it, right? So the cost is gonna be twice as much as what, you know, the city or the county could probably do for, but the batch is only 13%. And so it really, I mean, it works out, usually it works out.
But I just wanna throw out the program. Just modify the contract. We're out of time. MDT is on.
Thank you for the information.
Maybe next time you're...
We'll have you back, probably.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other public comment? Counsel has had the minutes from the December 3, 2024 meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from December 3, 2024. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is W W C proposal for comprehensive affordable housing study. Jeremy, would you like to make any comments on the proposal?
I didn't know you were, I didn't know you were, I'm on the agenda.
Oh, nice. Surprise, surprise.
It was a surprise, but, I mean, we've got lots of experience with real policies and, you know, analyzing data and all that stuff. And we're in the middle of your real policy right now and hope to have a draft. Well, we will have a draft for the planning board to complete the review in January and start that public process. And so I think this is a good point actually to start incorporating that, as in to the real policy. Because the new document is basically done. And so I think we can just jump right in.
Okay. Are there questions from counsel members? JD?
We tried to get two grants. The first grant was a, given a proposed design for affordable housing, check...
The first grant was a, given a proposed design for affordable housing, check of affordable housing, what would be the impact at city? That was avoided. The second was a, let's do a comprehensive study of the city, find out what our inventory is, the condition of the inventory, et cetera. And because of the grant we got for the growth plan, that one was denied. This reads like the second, not the first.
That's what the R F P stated, I guess, was a comprehensive housing study. So the actual advertisement was for a comprehensive housing study.
That's always created from the grant.
This is, we might end up having to get it through the Department of Commerce and we'll have to run, we have to make sure nobody gets our stuff.
So what, what, so the first, so the grant is for what now, say, to the apartment?
The, the idea was to take a block of affordable housing, put a little bit of ground, a little bit of floor, a lot of city family unit, stuff like that. Given that that exists, what is the impact on the infrastructure of the city to place that block somewhere along the edge of the city?
I mean, we give that to you. So I mean, I, I think that's what we're gonna say.
As, as the year has passed, this is probably the more valuable one to get.
Yeah.
It's just convincing, do you see?
If I remember correctly, the original grant that we applied for was a P E R for affordable housing.
P A or P A, right? Which, I mean, we do P E Rs and all that stuff all the time too, so we can easily, um, analyze impacts of the development to the city's infrastructure. And we work with our P A all the time, uh, across the, we, we still in a year, so we, we can certainly work with.
Do you wanna contact with Department of Commerce and see if they're gonna allow, if they're gonna allow us realignment, et cetera, if it's possible that it would be my good.
Yes, we can do that.
Yes, we can do that. The, uh, as the year has passed, I think this is, I mean, granted, this is becoming more valuable than the first. So something I try to, mm-hmm?
Sure. Which means taking action on the proposal will be delayed until January.
I'm not, I don't want to, I just have to do so. I just have a growth policy, and we will have, we have a whole housing appendix in the growth policy that's gonna talk about, it, it's kind of a high level housing. It's not a comprehensive, like, full on housing study, but it's a kind of a high level on, this is where we're at.